Okay, if everybody's ready, we'll start the meeting. Do we need to do anything? No, we're good?
Nope.
Okay.
I think we're good.
So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:07 and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're gonna start with the policy review, the public input at board meetings, B, E, D, H. And Esther, do you wanna kinda talk about that a little bit? It's moving public input for the first 30 minutes, is that right?
Correct. I can't tell. Anyway, is that, is this okay?
You shouldn't have to move.
Sorry about that.
We need training. We need training in new technology.
I know. So you have in your packet the sample policy from the School Board Association and then the current version for Stratum. The reason for this is because there was new legislation passed and so this new legislation is reflected in this policy. That law went into effect, I believe, on September 6th this year. So that's why we have it on our agenda first thing. We do have to adopt this policy. You could adopt and ask me to bring it back if you weren't sure. The reason we have to adopt it is because it's law. And what we're recommending, the biggest change is that there needs to be a minimum of 30 minutes of public input at every school board meeting. The New Hampshire School Boards Association has recommended that if we have visitors but they're not speaking, we start the clock at public input. I can time it on my timer, 30 minutes. You would ask if anyone had any public input. If yes, keep it to the three minutes, what our policy states, that three minutes. And then if there's only two people and they've both used three minutes and you want to as a board, allow them to go again. You could allow them to go again, that's your decision. The reason it's important to state at three minutes is because in the 30-minute window, if seven more people walk in at 6:15 and you've let them go 15 minutes, then technically everybody else after that gets 15 minutes. So if you keep it at the three minutes, it makes it as fair as possible, but you can always continue to do that and if that's, it's not like they can only speak once for three minutes. So, am I being clear about that?
Yeah.
So you can, it's not that you're gonna limit people always just to three minutes, but it does allow you to keep track just in case someone walks in at 6:25 and these people have had, you know you've limited that person to three minutes, so that person would have an opportunity within that 30-minute window to speak. You can always extend that 30 minutes as a board if you choose to. Say 10 people walk in at 6:29 and it's one minute left, you as a board can extend that 30 minutes, but we do have to have that window of 30 minutes. If no one is speaking, I will start that timer. You will begin to move through the agenda. If someone walks in, the chair would say, "Are you here for input?" They said yes, you would do the three minutes, just like I talked about. So we can move through the agenda if there is no one here for public input, but we would keep track of the 30 minutes. And then I would say to the chair, FYI, the 30 minutes is now expired. So that's what the recommendation is, so we don't have to sit here for 30 minutes if no one is here for public input and do nothing. So that was the recommendation from our legal counsel as well as NHSBA Barrett Christina.
Okay.
So that's what I would ask you to consider as you read through this and if you have any questions about the policy itself, feel free to ask me. If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve this policy. And again, if you're not 100% sure and you wanna revisit it, I could certainly put it on the agenda again next month, but at least you would have the policy in place for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
So I just wanna make, so I understand what you said. I thought I'd interpreted the policy that we might have to open the time up at a later time period in the meeting, but I just want to share, I'm clear. So you're saying, once that 30-minute clock starts, once we hit 30 minutes, we do not have to open it up on the back end?
Correct, you do not have to.
Okay, so I misinterpreted that.
You certainly could as a board.
But we could, right.
You know, we say, you know what, 25 people came in on this hot topic and we, so we're gonna have another non-public, another public input at the end of the meeting. You can always add it, but we have to have it and we're recommending you put it at the front, so we know we've done it. And then, because you always have the liberty to add more.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, I think we as a board demonstrate we would open it back up. I just wanna make sure that we understand kind of what the minimum is for those nights when nobody shows up. I just wanna make sure we're clear. Because I had misinterpreted it then, so thank you.
And then will we make, if we needed to open it up, which would happen rarely, but if we needed to reopen it or extend the time, is it a motion that does that or is it?
The chair would ask for a motion to reopen and make the motion to do that.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be officially on the agenda.
Right, okay.
I just have a quick question. So I was just looking at the sample one, so number 12, where they talk about public may request initiatives and other items we placed on the board's agenda. Did you guys see that?
Yeah, and that's pretty much in line with anything. Doesn't mean you have to talk about it.
Okay.
It means.
So remember the public.
Madam, you know, I would like the board to put the building plans on the agenda and it absolutely will consider that. Thank you for your input. Remember, public input is just that you don't, it's not a conversation and I think that we always wanna have a conversation because it feels more polite and it feels more natural. However, it can get us into trouble as a board because you may not be prepared to answer the question. You may say something that you're not informed legally on. It gives me an opportunity to go back and make sure I've got all the information for you that request is absolutely appropriate, however, it would be for the next agenda.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
Anybody else? So are we looking to adopt this tonight and then not?
And if it's good, I won't put it on again, you know, but I just wanted you to know, we do have to adopt it, but if people had more questions or concerns, we could bring it back again for discussion.
Okay. So does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Do you have a second? I'll second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, going forward. So with that, is there anybody here for public input that would like to speak? No? Okay, so we're gonna start the.
I'm putting on my.
Perfect, thank you. All right. So moving forward on to approval of minutes, June 15th, public board minutes. Does anybody have any changes on that? Make sure I have it in the right order.
The only thing I would say is normally in like a professional setting, I'd go by Jennifer. I noticed it's like all different, all different places. No big deal, but in public usually I'd go by Jennifer.
Okay. That makes sense. Anything else? No? Right, do we wanna move forward and maybe we can pass them all through at once? Okay.
I was not at one of these, so.
Yeah, I believe I have to abstain from the third as well.
Okay, so we'll do it separately. Okay. So the June 15th non-public board minutes, does anybody have any changes on that one? No? Okay. I don't think I did either. Oh wait, so should I pass, I should pass the first one then?
Yes, there's other.
Sorry, let's do that.
So this one sounds like it's a motion to pass as presented.
Yes. A motion to pass as presented for June 15th public board minutes. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll move.
Okay. Jen, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then moving forward, it sounds like we're good on the non-public minutes. So do I have a motion to pass those?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Erin?
To pass the non-publics from June 15th.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the last piece is the public board minutes from August 3rd. And that was just the one where it was just the three of us. So does anybody have any changes on that one?
No.
I think I did on this one. We can change Jen, we can change Jennifer. Okay, do we have a motion to pass the August 3rd minutes? Do we wanna say as amended if retaining Jen's name on there probably?
Yeah.
As amended?
I'll move.
Okay. Jen, do I have a second?
Socka.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstaining?
Aye.
Aye.
Two abstaining, okay, thank you. All right, and now we'll move on to the superintendent report.
Sure, there, you'll note there's no financial on this and that is because the books haven't closed and usually it takes a month to get a decent financial report in October. So that'll be back on in October. You signed the MS 25, which is the close letter of the year with the figures that you heard in June with a few adjustments for paying bills, et cetera. So that's it for a financial update. As far as our update, we kinda just recapped the summer. We had a lot of professional development at the SAU level. We had all the administrators in for three days, two and a half days. It was really around trauma and self-care and compassionate care. We got great reviews.
So good.
It was great.
It was unbelievable. Best three days we've probably had in a long time.
Yeah.
And we also did our assessment policy and did some work around assessment. So that hopefully will carry over to our buildings when they are thinking about building level goals. They'll be considering authentic assessment that's aligned with competency-based education, offering a variety of strategies and also really measuring those I can statements and those competencies. Do those assessments really measure that for proficiency? And working through that and having those conversations. So that was great professional development. Along that line, there was also an assessment, a three-day institute that many schools had, all the schools had representatives at and brought teams to. So again, working through our assessment policy, which you guys looked at last year and approved what that really means, breaking it apart. How do we assure we're aligned to that policy and what does that look like? Which then connects to that data dashboard that you've seen at the joint board level with Chris Andruski presenting that. So we keep revisiting that because the data that goes in obviously has to be good data for those dashboards to really help us drive and move around a variety of things, whether it's academic achievement, staff. And some of you might recall, we did that whole activity where we had small groups around how would we measure these things, whether it was governance or staff or teachers or student growth. That's now all implemented into that dashboard. So we did a lot of work around that this summer. And we, all the schools opened. I have to say, this is the first year that I went to all the buildings where every building just felt joyful and people were excited to be there and all of our administrators are, I feel so fortunate that all of our administrators are really, all the arrows are the same direction. We're at different places with those arrows, but they're all the same direction, which is, I think, really, really hopeful. And, you know, 12 years later, I finally.
Go, Doc.
So that's awesome because it just, you know, I came here, I can't remember which day, one of the days and everyone just was happy and laughing and just looking forward to getting off to a really great start. And I feel like that's been happening. Our biggest issue is our transportation, you know? Not as much in Stratum, but certainly in Exor and the co-op. We had two bus drivers quit and one got sick on one day, so we had to, you know, we were short routes and rerouting people. So that was probably our toughest hurdle that first week or so of school. And now we're up and rolling, you know? Discipline is getting back to that norm and, as well as a variety of other things that our personnel, things like that are all churning up, which is expected. So we'll get back on track and it's nice to be focused on everything besides COVID and mitigating factors. So that's a great feeling for us. So that's kind of the report for you. I don't know if you have any questions or anything like that.
Questions?
I do.
Okay.
How's the Alma rollout going?
Yeah, well, the Alma rollout, the high school's going tough and it's basically because Canvas and Alma are fighting with each other. I hear Chris Andruski on the phone every day and every day he's getting a little more escalated with those two companies. We've been told now that by Monday, it should be fixed. Originally, it was January 1st and then it was six weeks out and now it's. So Chris is doing his best to work through that. So that's our biggest. I think the elementary levels.
Good here.
Are fine. It's really at the high school where it is causing a problem because of the Canvas. Everybody else has CSO. So that, it seems to be an easier match. But it certainly has been a struggle at the high school, for sure. Very frustrating, so we're pushing as hard as we can.
We're good here, so.
Yeah. But here is good.
I mean, an information system at an elementary school is a very different use than at a middle school or a high school. So really, it's for adults, whereas an information system is more pertinent, I think, to families and students for middle school and high school kids. So really, it's just for us to be able to navigate it and we're pretty comfortable with it. And then CSO serves the tool of communicating with families and students in the way that Alma might for older kids. So we're really fortunate, we've been using both of them for enough time now that we feel good about it.
Great. Any other questions?
I'm just gonna ask on the, on the information system stuff around Alma. For here, do we consider it to be like based on roadmap of what kinda data and information we wanna have in it? How close are we to like?
That's part of that data dashboard I spoke of.
Yes, exactly.
So all of the fields that we showed you at the joint board, like discipline and attendance and student information as far as names and addresses and then as well as the grading side of things, are they're all up and being used because we don't have Power School anymore to be used? So all those attendants and everything like that are being used.
It's all in there now. It's all pulled from all that.
Is it possible, are there any signals that you see in any of the analytical information that's worth ever sharing with us at like part of the superintendent updates? You know what I mean? Just stuff that you guys see as signals about whatever?
I think, I think the plan is to share those, at least screenshots of that dashboard at the joint board level.
At the joint board level?
Because they really are SAU-level trends is what we're looking at and what part of that dashboard is. Certainly at the building level, I think the administration looks for different things like attendance is right before Christmas break. Does that, you know, does attendance go way down or things like that? It'll be easier to see as time goes on and then we can lay year after year. I think more immediate would be discipline as an SAU, right? Because that's just a bigger amount of people going in. So that's, that's the anticipated plan, is to do some screenshots, keep you guys aware of what data is coming in. Again, even the discipline data we're trying to work through, we just had this conversation. What goes in to be for elementary level, right? Because there's a lot of conversations that might happen that wouldn't necessarily maybe go in. Should we be putting it in? Do we wanna find that trending data? So those conversations, this system has brought up some good conversations with, obviously, elementary is a little bit different than middle and high school, right? Because middle and high school have really clear infractions and this is a major, this is a minor, right? They have that language because they're doing that all the time, every day. Whereas the elementary schools, what's age appropriate to document? And do you want that in there forever? Right? So you're a kindergartner and you, I don't know, you spit at a teacher. Do you want that in there? Be right? When you're an eighth grader? That's kinda part of that question. How much do you wanna kinda highlight kids as they're learning in kindergarten and first grade and second grade? How to be in a group, you know, all those things that by middle and high school, they're aware of. They're aware of being able to know what it looks like on the bus, right? A lot of work on the bus.
The bus.
The bus.
Everybody's favorite topic round here.
Yeah.
One of the things we did talk about, Eric, on the elementary principals, just our principals' meeting was, were we here Tuesday? It was Tuesday.
That was yesterday.
Okay, that was yesterday.
Doesn't even feel like that.
I apologize.
It feels like it's been days.
A little busy right now. It was like a lifetime ago. One of the things we did talk about too, though, was like being able to, like, Esther talked about like SAU, why like how many students, for example, at SMS are in intervention in second grade? And what are they in intervention for? Are they tier one, are they tier two, are they tier three? What are they receiving it for? Is it literacy, is it OT? And being able to really be able to look at that, you know, grade level-wise, school-wise, SAU-wide. So there are things, there are continuing conversations around what other data would be helpful in the dashboard that would really help inform our instruction or potentials for professional learning across all the elementary schools. So if we get some of that data and we're like, oh, we all could use this and it makes really sense to like pool our resources and provide that professional learning across all elementary schools, not just here or not just in Kensington. So there's lots of conversations about what additional data would be really informative to us in our practice.
We're also talking about using the data to drive budgets, make recommendations to boards and have good data to show you why another reading teacher would, seems appropriate.
This is kinda what I'm getting at. Like, I just feel like if I'm getting a snapshot only at the, at the joint board level and it sounds like there's so many different, like you need to tease that out in terms of what's applicable to our district versus the rest.
I think, I think a year from now, I can answer that question a lot more clearly as the principals decide, this is really be really valuable information, this not so much, right? It's just getting used to, and we just talked about the interventions data and putting that in. That's not, that section isn't in there yet. And we're all like, that would be super valuable. So now Chris is working on to get that up so people can put that in. So those conversations are coming out of beginning to use it this way.
And I think that's just what I meant by the roadmap, like where, what kinda stuff are we thinking of adding? And what kind of analytical data will be available to you? And then I think at a macro level, what can you impart to the board that'll help us make better decisions, I think is ultimately kind of the concise way of asking the original question.
That kinda three to five-year window, we hope it to be open to everyone, right? Any parent can go in and get alive, right where things are at, at any time. That's the ultimate goal.
Right.
We're just not there yet. Because we're trying to figure out what data is important to have in there, what will parents wanna see, what will educators wanna see? You know, those kinds of questions.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Okay. So do we wanna move on to policy committee, Erin?
So we have not had a meeting.
Okay.
So any policies that are in the packet are new to me as they are to the rest of the board.
Okay.
You'd like me to speak to the.
That'd be awesome.
So you have the other policy, ACDR, which is the special observance days. Again, this was new legislation and a couple of days were added that are officially categorized by category, categorize, I can't even say the words. The religion has designated them as a true religious holiday and they weren't in the special observance days. So those were added and I can't remember the exact ones, but that's why that is up, because they did the new registration and one of those days added. So we added them.
Okay.
It's the only change, really.
Okay. And this is the first read of this?
Yep, or you can adopt if you choose to. You don't have to do a first read because this is pretty, this one's pretty cut and dry.
Right.
But it's up to the board, certainly we can bring it back if you want for a second read.
Okay. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments on it?
It seemed pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah. Do we wanna have a motion to adopt the ACDR special observance days policy?
I'll make the motion to accept ACD-R.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's pretty easy. Let's see. So the next step is me, the superintendent steering, or search steering committee update. So there's seven of us on the steering committee. There's, you know, the six schools plus the CMS has two, gets two people because of their size and stuff, so as we usually do. Anyway, so the seven of us got together and came up with the survey that went out on Monday and also came up with the idea of doing the community discussion groups, which will be about eight to 12 people. The discussion groups will include certified staff, support personnel, paraprofessionals, school admin, students and community and parent, community members and parents. So those discussion groups will meet and meet with the candidates and kind of, you know, talk about what they're interested in and get to know the candidates and gather data and then bring that back to the steering committee, which will basically become the interview committee. There'll be one person from each discussion group on the interview committee as well. And so we'll go through all the data that they brought, the data from the survey and kind of come up with interview questions based on that. So then the interviews will start and we'll kinda go through and come up with several finalists. We'll make a public announcement of the finalists and then the joint board will hold a public interview on November 10th, which will be public and then we'll vote. So we're kind of, hopefully to have the whole thing done by November 10th. That's our goal right now. So we've been working towards that. There's been a lot of back and forth between the seven of us and with Heather. Heather's been great about helping us with all of this and kind of, we've come up with a flow chart and timelines for each step because it's a lot. And so, yeah, so we're, I think we're in pretty good shape right now. The survey went out Monday, went out again on Tuesday and then it, I have asked that it go out to the select, in the select board newsletter on Friday. I posted it to Facebook, Stratum Talks today. I posted it in like, in paper version at the town offices. So if anybody else can think of any other place you guys wanna see it go, let me know, but it sounds like they are getting responses in format, so. Do you guys have questions or?
When are you guys trying to close the registration for people who are interested in participating?
On Tuesday. So they have, yeah, we, I think it was like a nine-day window is what we decided. We didn't wanna leave it open for too long and then we needed to turn it around so we had time to then go through, because there are questions on there that are open and it's, we're gonna have to go through and like, you know, sort out all the different, look for the trends. So that will take a little bit of time, for sure. But yeah, that's kind of our plan right now. So. Questions or? So that meeting did get moved up, just so you guys know, the joint board is now gonna be November 10th.
Okay.
So I hope, I hope that works for everybody.
That's right, for Veterans Day.
Yep. All right, anything else on that? And please tell people if they do have questions or you're getting questions, to send them to me and I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns or if they just wanna comment on it. I'm happy to take all of those questions as well. So if that's it, do we wanna move on to building committee?
I knew you were gonna do kind of like a brief. I know that there's been a lot going on. Sure. Yeah, so the building committee met a couple of times this summer. We met in July and again in August. Erin, Esther, Kate, Rachel Jefferson joined us, Tim, anyone else? Selena, anyone else? I'm forgetting.
Brad. No Brad, only Tim and I.
No Brad.
Yeah.
And then Dick Wendell joined Esther, Tim and I as well. So, you know, we kind of, we met a couple of times to take a look at the options, which are in the board packet. So there's three options and then there's also a pro and cons document. And then the final item in your board packet is a timeline. And what we kind of determined in our August meeting is that our original timeline was a bit ambitious. And at this point, what we are hoping to do is slightly modify that timeline. So that this would be on the warrant, hopefully in spring of 2025. So that we would spend this next board year working with Banwell to really finalize a plan, look for pricing of that plan and and then kind of go back and forth on how we want to start structuring, you know, public comment and feedback. Another issue that really came up in our last meeting too is, you know, what do we want this building to be? And, you know, the three options are great, but then you also have people saying like, well, what about a community center? What about basketball courts? And so, you know, I think we just felt like we really need to kind of just slow down for a minute, consider those questions and really get input from the board to on on what you guys are thinking about the board, about the new building. So at this point, what the building committee is hoping is that we could review the three options that are in the board packet, have some questions for Banwell. Brad can join us and perhaps even schedule a workshop kind of thing where we could more informally go back and forth and just kind of have easy discussion about some of the ideas and so, and then have Banwell join us at the October board meeting. Am I forgetting anything guys?
No.
Great summary.
So if we had a workshop, it would be like when we've had them before, public? Us, it's like a working.
And we still would have to have the 30 minutes of public input.
Okay.
It is a meeting of the board.
Okay.
I know we had talked about maybe doing it like from five to six before the next board meeting. So it's still one night, but coming in and really designating that hour to this conversation. And then Brad is planning on coming to the October board meeting. So I don't know if you would want him here at five or he, if he could even come at five. I know he's planning on six, so.
He was planning on six, but I would be happy to reach out if you wanted him at the workshop.
Or if you want to have that informal conversation and then ask, develop the questions and have those ready for Brad at six.
Yeah, and then another thing, we've been talking about that I think would be super helpful is to look at some local schools that have done some of this work, just so we can get ideas. He has three in particular that he'd like you guys to see. And that, what he wanted to show you was the difference between like new construction versus renovated versus same skeleton with just the inside gutted. So he had three schools that he wanted to take you to. His feeling was based on the the new updated timeline that there really could be something you could do like over a time when there was no kids in the school. So you could really have your way with the building in terms of like not being worried about there being 150 kids in the cafeteria or whatever, and he would be happy to go. And he said, start, I think it's Wyndham, then. No, it's not Oyster River. He wants to go solely elementary schools. He feels like it's really important to see elementary schools because they're entirely different builds.
Goldenbrook, New Market and Little Harbor.
Thank you. So he would really like to do that and go and do it either Thanksgiving or maybe the December break when there's time to do that and people aren't stressed about trying to miss work or trying to make it happen. And there's, the school's in session, but he would be happy to take a group.
Yep. He'll track people if we want.
He'll trip.
Get a van.
Can you bring additional?
Let's get a bus, party bus.
Can you bring?
If we made more of them.
Get the permission slip signed first.
You're doing board business.
Yeah. Essentially, so you have to be limited to that, that two that are probably on the committee because of the quorum.
Okay.
And you're definitely discussing school related business.
Yeah, you can only have two, right?
Right.
Bring the bike if you want.
I'm going to have some travel.
I'm going to find me out.
Like film it along the way, I don't know.
Admin can be more than two.
A whole lot.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, did anybody get a chance to look at those three options or does anybody? Yeah, I don't know if anybody wants to talk about them at this point or, you know, so included in the board packet, I've included the stuff, I found the most helpful, the timeline, the options and then sort of the pros and cons. But Kate has also done a lot of work querying her staff meetings. And so everything is on the drive. So, you know, head in there and take a look at that stuff too. So she has, she wrote up her notes and. We just didn't print it all out for the.
Awesome. So what do you, does everybody want to do, do we want to do workshop? Can people make it at five or is that too early? If we did it at five, like before the October meeting, we did it as a workshop?
Yeah, and I would ask that I just post it as our regular meeting, but the item would be open the meeting, building, and we could take as long as, you know, we could take, and I would start that public just like I did tonight.
Okay.
At the 30 minutes.
So it would just be a start time at five?
Just a start time at five. If you guys actually.
If I could just add that maybe having, it might be tough for people who want to participate in public comment to get here at five for that. Some of us have enough trouble just getting here for kids doing things to get out of work.
Start it after, at the end of that building discussion, which will probably be closer to six, our normal start time. Does that make sense? Just list it on the agenda that way, Kate, when you and I meet.
Okay.
We can just designate it underneath the building committee conversation.
Does that sound better for people, everybody?
I can make that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, I can do it.
All right, yeah, let's do that for six. I think that makes more sense for people.
And really, I guess I would just encourage people to kind of think big, you know, and, you know, we did kind of look at cost estimates. I mean, obviously it's pricey, but I think, you know, really we want the right building for the town. Brainstorm big, then see where we go from there.
This is almost kind of falls into old business about the getting notices out. But is there a way that we could get for something like this where we want people to be able to come and participate? Just thinking about, is there something we could do to send out a message just about this on the agenda specifically for people in town or?
Yeah, we certainly can. I will, I would, I would caution the board to ask for public participation at this level because in our meetings for building committee, they really want us to decide as a group with the committees you have, what is that, what is the final option? And then really invite the public in on the one option. If you start to invite the public in and you still have three options, it can get pretty confusing and hard according to the people, the people that have done it. And I know that you're all at that meeting and certainly it will be on the agenda, but it's not really the place where the public input is going to be helpful because we don't have very many answers.
So also what we were, what was recommended to us was part of it was we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. If they come into this meeting and say, we want this, 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 these are great ideas, and then as we narrow it down from three plans to one planner, three plans plus all the great ideas, if the community members had this great idea and it doesn't make it on, we don't want to lose public support by axing out their ideas. So what was suggested to us by professionals who've done this before in how to get public on board is to come up with a good plan and then bring it to the public. And I don't mean just here in this room. We're going to actually have to actually work on public support. So that's when we're going to go out and really go after people to get on board with the plan. And I think another consideration too is asking for state aid. And so that's why when we push the warrant to 25, we also need to, you know, prepare an application to asking for state aid and all of that. So we had started moving ahead saying like, how do we bring the public in? And who do we want on these committees? And because we absolutely want public comment, but it was just too rushed considering the timeline and everything that needed to be done. And so really this first step of the board kind of solidifying one idea is really the first step in the process. And then we go down the path of requesting and desiring public comment and support.
To piggyback on what Jennifer said, the two, there was a need for really, once you have your, the scheme that you really want, getting some numbers because it's really hard. They talked about for a community to have input without knowing numbers. Because it's such an nebulous idea right now. And so what they were talked about is that if you don't really have that, people get stuck because there isn't anything to talk about until they have the numbers. Because for many people, that's what matters or when they decide what they want to support or don't want to support, there's often a dollar attached to that. And so it became really difficult when you didn't have that information was what was shared with us as well.
Yep, okay. I just think about people, sometimes people want to see how the sausage is made, whether they have an opportunity to have input into it or not, just seeing the process. What I don't, what I wouldn't want as a community member taxpayer is to hear about this later once we've said this is how we want it to be and we're pushing this on you versus here were all the steps.
No, there's going to be tons of opportunity.
I think that was the other reason.
It's just kind of getting to that point, yeah.
Yep.
Pushing that out was to make sure that there is a lot of opportunity for public input and just, we have to have enough information so they are informed to give public input.
Sure.
Because one of the first questions, Kate, right, is how much is this going to cost? I mean, that's going to be one of the first questions. And we have to do some things, you know. Public comment 30 minutes is now over. I lost my train of thought, but I think that.
How much is it going to cost?
Yeah, and I think that being able to have some answers like that, even if it's ballpark along with applying for state aid, and that is a whole nother process where we have to have population study completed to apply for that and some other things completed to apply for that. And those, those are really questions that we have to get the information before we can say, well, we had this option and we took out this because our population study said this. Or we added this in because our population study said this and so we thought it was important. So having at least our ducks in a row as a board and as a committee with some more information other than this kind of, we got three options. So I think, I think that's the goal, Eric, is is making sure that that's process is slow enough so that there's lots of opportunity for that, along with us being well informed to answer the questions the best we can.
That's fair.
Okay, so is everybody okay with the, do we not starting the meeting at six?
At five for the building. I'll start, you'll start the meeting.
Okay.
That'll be the first agenda item after the pledge. And then I won't put public input on until after the building discussion. We won't start that timer, so that'll be closer to that, six or 6:15 mark.
Okay.
I think that's what I heard, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That sounds good. Anything else on that? So moving on to the SMS administrative team report.
If you guys had any questions.
It looks like you've been doing a lot of hiring.
Yep, still working on it.
I know, I was going to say, are your, are all your pair, no, they're not filled? Oh, my gosh.
Working on it.
Wow.
Yeah, we're getting closer.
Good, that's good.
And we've had some amazing new hires, like really awesome, which feels really good as well. They've really fit right in and been seamless and.
Great.
Kind of seize the opportunities that they've, it's been really nice.
Yeah.
Bunch of us just came from the cross country meet, so girls and boys both went.
It was so fun.
It was awesome.
I cried last week, don't repeat that.
I know.
It's an emotional thing.
It really is.
I was like, when did this happen to me?
I think I cried because we ran three races.
I literally was like, this is absurd. It's a, it's a, it's a really special thing to attend, I agree, Jennifer.
Yeah.
How are buses going with the twenties and the thirties and getting the schedule down and?
Continues to take a while.
They're rolling on four whee, or eight wheels or 12 wheels. Sometimes they're duly, duly, I don't even know.
Yeah.
It's going. Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's just, and it's, but it's all, everything, we're not, this is not unique to us. I think it's a matter of we have, you know, nine buses instead of 10. It's just harder, traffic is different, you know, it's just, we're working it out. We're really fortunate because the weather's been really great. So our 30 buses that are here a little bit longer can be outside playing. The 10 minute later dismissal time being 3:05 instead of 2:55 is a huge amount of time. So when you think about 25 minutes after school only being 15 or 20 now after school, it's a very different amount of time for kids to be on the playground after school and still sort of maintain some level of composure. Whereas last year was like a half hour, they were ready to go home, right? And you can't blame them, they're, they're seven, they're like, I'm exhausted, I need a nap. With it only being 15 minutes is a lot better for them. It's a lot easier for us to sort of make it feel okay and kids seem, seem well. We have a ton of staff, we have a lot of duty people out there, which is really helpful. So we're still working out a little bit of the kinks, but it's feeling okay.
Awesome.
Yeah. So just to follow up on that, is the issue, you, you're referring to buses, you're referring to drivers. What, what is the actual?
Drivers. Lack of drivers.
Mm-hmm.
We got the, first student has the buses, they don't have the drivers.
I mean, they have sign, sign bonuses.
They've been reasonable.
I mean, they've changed everything and they just can't find drivers. So the same drivers drive for the middle school as drive for the elementary school?
Yeah, then high school comes to us.
High school comes to us.
Yeah.
High school.
So high schools are 20 buses that get here kind of earlier. And then CMS buses are the ones that get here later.
Just to plug to Trish Daly, who was our transportation coordinator, she'll get a call literally at 2:30. We're down four drivers, you got to reroute buses.
Okay.
And she, she's a miracle worker, honestly.
She is wonderful to work with, she's great. So then the same bus driver will pick up additional kids and incorporate, okay.
Yeah, and she'll, well, pick up more kids and then route changes, which makes it always longer if they're adding, you know, if they've lost a driver for whatever reason. I mean, people are calling in sick.
Yeah.
You know? So it's, it's, I feel like the same in every profession you go in, whether it's retail or you're just seeing people struggle to meet the needs of what's happening, whether it's ordering a dinner or driving a bus or being a para. Or, I mean, we're very fortunate that our teaching positions are all filled. Super fortunate, many, many schools don't have teaching positions filled.
Right.
So.
Can I ask a question on that? And I apologize for my ignorance on not knowing the contract there, but just contractually, are we, what are they, are they providing? Are they providing transportation? Are they providing buses? Are they providing people? Like, are we, do we get a credit when they can't fulfill?
We do, Molly did a nice job of negotiating, particularly during COVID, of us, if, if the runs are reduced, we don't get charged for the runs, there's a cap on gas prices. So she revamped that, I think it was about a year ago, does that sound right, Erin?
Yeah, I remember.
And went over that again with the joint board because it's, everyone is impacted by that contract. But certainly if you have specific questions, Molly negotiated that, feel free to email her. But I know we get credit, I know if our runs are reduced, I know if they can't meet our needs, you know, we get a kickback. That was one of the reasons those transportation lines stayed so high during COVID, because we didn't pay them what we had contracted because we, systems were built in.
Because of the contracts that Molly did, we were fortunate.
She did a great, I mean, she was written.
And I don't even think we were up to negotiate. She went in and said, I want to negotiate now because, and did a great job.
Any other questions on the principal update?
I do. The fire alarm?
Yeah.
So what was, what set off the alarm?
It was in my email.
I know, it was.
I thought it was just a faulty sensor, it needed to be replaced, they came and replaced it.
So I've heard great things about the alarm, that everybody handled it really well, that it was a shock. I think it's great to have actual true surprise for.
I bet you do.
Your building, for the fire department, for everybody. I love the idea of a shock of a fire alarm.
On picture day.
To really see, I know, to really see how it goes. And, and post today.
And our facilities director was out, so.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
And it was like amazing, like we came, we were out there for almost an hour. We came back in within five minutes, everybody was back in a new routine, a new schedule was announced. So everybody knew where they needed to be, when they needed to be there. We got great compliments from Gaskis, the company that does, like, it was given, it was a little bit of a surprise. It could not have gone more smoothly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we felt really, the kids were phenomenal.
You didn't have kids panicking?
None.
No.
Kindergartens, when they heard it, were like, some of them just dropped their tray right where they were standing because they didn't know what to do.
Yeah.
But they did a great, like, we were, the kindergarten first were probably the most remarkable. They did the best of all the kids.
Awesome.
Which is usually the case, actually.
Kids, kids were asking like, is this real?
Yeah.
Like, well, I don't see a fire, but we are out here.
I'm with you, so I don't.
Yeah, it went really well, we were.
Awesome.
And there were a couple of things, we're like, oh, that's a really good idea, just like things we learned, which is always really helpful, it's like, oh, we never thought about that, that's something we can think about, which is great, it's good. Inform our, inform our safety and security committee, both here and on the SEU one, which is great.
I would say kids were out and accounted for in the same speed as when it's planned. We were cleared on both sides pretty quick.
Awesome. The fire department, they're like, are the kids still in the building? I was like, no, I'm not just out here leaving the kids inside. He's like, they're so quiet, I'm like, yes, they are. They were so quiet.
That's great.
Awesome. Nice job preparing them. They did great.
Yep, anything else? Okay, I guess we'll move on to old business. So the town communication and school board, I've been in touch with a couple of people over there in the select board office and they are happy to put any information that we want to give them in their newsletter. So I was able to put this meeting in the, in the newsletter and then also link the Blue Hawk Media to say if you can't come and watch it, you can watch it back. So that went out and then again, the superintendent survey went out, well, should go out on Friday and that. So they're happy to do that, that goes out twice a month. So I will try to stay on top of that. I couldn't put the agenda in because it was too soon, the turnaround time, they wanted it before. So I just put the link to where the agenda would be on the SEU website. So anyway, so that's the news on that and they're happy to do it. But if people have other ideas of things we want to put in there, just let me know. Because I, and I forgot to ask her how many people that actually goes out to and I will ask her that. Because I was, after I sent that, I was like, I wonder how many people were reaching with us. So that is something that I can find out. But yeah, so if there's anything else that anybody wants to put in there, just let me know.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yep.
So I, I got feedback on that and I was happy to see it, I thought it was great. And somebody that I spoke with at a soccer game said that they saw it and they were happy about it. They asked about the agenda thing too.
Okay.
I don't know, you know, it's, it doesn't line up time wise. Is it possible that you can, that you can kind of give a sense of what, like, is, could we provide a bulleted list of what we expect, it's not like an official agenda, you can't do that.
It's, it's tough because we, we actually meet almost two and a half weeks before it goes out because we have to meet, so.
Right.
It, it's, it would be, I, I would hate to think that, oh, I think we're going to talk about the building and then I meet with Kate and we, we have something else that's come up. And so we try to be efficient and it's not on there.
Right. I did say in there, you know, the agenda will be posted a week prior, so click here to look. So hopefully that will, but no, I thought the same thing, it's a bummer we couldn't get that on there because if you're reading through it, you're not going to probably take the, you know, it's just easier if it's just there to click right on it. So I don't know, I, it goes out the second Friday, is it the second Friday and the third Friday, I believe? So the timing is just off, like you said. So the timing is just off, like you said.
I mean, we can meet earlier to have one, it just means that we've, are kind of stuck with that agenda, so if something comes out. And you ask for it to be on the agenda, it would be kicked to another month, which some of them might be actually six weeks later. It's the only, that's the only impact it would have, really.
It's also attached to our newsletters. I mean, once it's posted, like I post the site until it's posted and then I post the actual link to the agenda. Like, so like three weeks ago, it was just a link to this is what page it'll be on. And then in this, this newsletter said, here's the agenda and gave you a link directly to the agenda, so it does go out at least in one format.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we can kind of play around with it too.
I mean, it's up to you if you want to set the agenda and get it posted.
Yeah, yeah.
Early, that, that's, you know.
Or if there's something really big on it that we want to, you know what I mean? Maybe it's a case by case basis.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was obviously, the idea was if people know, if they have a unique interest in this particular thing, they're more likely to come. I have a feeling that if somebody gets the email and then they, they may not think to look later, you know, when I see my email, once it's kind of done.
Yep.
If I don't act on it soon.
Right.
Kind of goes in the back, so. It's just a challenge because I know we want to see more people here and participating in the process, but.
Yep.
Tough.
I also have a question. What are other connections between the town and the school board? It was just funny, the way it was phrased in that newsletter, it's like, oh, we're going to post this, as if it was like some brand new idea. But I was wondering, are there other communication channels between the town and the school board?
Other than like election stuff, I can't think of.
Is it someone from the school board on the town budget committee?
We're, well, we are always invited to be.
We have a financial advisory committee.
Okay, right, right.
That comes in, I think our first meeting with them is usually December, usually it's presented to you as in November, December, and they come in December, January.
Like the fact.
So a town person is on the fact, but what about a school board?
So there is an invitation and I think it usually comes to us in the fall from Dave Emanuel or.
I don't remember that.
It doesn't come through, I don't believe, I don't remember it coming through me.
No, I don't think it does. I think that it comes right to the board chair and then the board chair sends an email out asking any of the board members if they can be a member.
Yeah.
And say that again, that's the town.
The town budget committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
The invitation has been extended each year that I've been on the board.
Okay.
I was just talking to someone and she was saying she thought it was Rachel maybe last year, but she wasn't sure.
Okay, I can ask Dave Emanuel about that. If there's a board member.
It'd be nice to have like that communication between the two boards. Especially as we think about the warrant, what's coming off of bond, what's going, you know, as we think about wanting to put it on the warrant.
To that point, Jen, some of the feedback I got from the same person was that there's also some activities that happen at the library as well. That we could perhaps plug into somehow or. Use it as an opportunity to.
Like what type of activity?
I can't remember what it was. I'll have to dig into it and I have the contact information for the new librarian. But it may be an opportunity just to even just get the word out about X, Y, or Z.
Leslie, before she left, she was doing these awesome brainstorming sessions. I don't know if anybody went, but where people just talked about like, how do we get people more aware of what's going on? Nonpartisan, but just aware of issues and so she at that library, she held a bunch of those at the library. They were great. I don't know if they'll go anywhere now that she's gone, but.
Hopefully that contact information, perhaps we can reach out to them, see what's available.
That'd be great. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to, everybody over there is always great to work with and very, you know, willing, like we're like excited that we wanted to put something in the newsletter.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like.
Yeah, so, okay, anything else on that?
And then. So the town sends out meeting minutes from their committees. Is it worth having them send out our meeting minutes? I read.
You read them?
I read the zoning board, I read the rec commission. It's boring, but it's worth it.
It's true. Would they be published after we approve them? So they'd be, yeah.
Yeah, which is how all of the meeting minutes are.
Okay.
Yeah, they'd be a month, six weeks late, just because of the rotations that they go out.
Yep.
Not late, but.
Right, right.
You wouldn't send them out, I don't think, until you have approved them as a board.
Right, it's another way to hand our community the information.
Yeah, so does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Oh, I go.
Okay, I can, I can ask them about that too.
Yeah, and if you're asking about the who gets that selectman email, it'd also be curious, how many people?
That's what I was going, yeah.
Get the minutes. Erin and four people.
It's interesting. There's no town newspaper, so this is.
Yeah.
All the stuff that's not in the town newspaper.
Okay, I can ask about this stuff. And then the submitting.
I like it too, Erin.
It's how much, it's how we ended up here.
Well, we're glad. There you go.
Okay, that's a good one. Anything else on that? Okay, I guess we can move on to new business. So we usually do the board goals every fall. So I think some of them definitely need to be updated.
Yep, they're on the back of your agenda.
So I didn't know if we wanted to kind of take a look at these and then maybe everybody come up with a goal or think for the next meeting or if we want to talk about it now or what.
I believe after the elections, Jennifer had a great point that she's on the board with goals from people that set them before she joined the board. I didn't know if we wanted to think about not coinciding with the school year, but coinciding with an election cycle.
Yep, I could see that would make sense.
We could do like short term goals or just get rid of ones right now that.
Right, like the COVID one, yeah, like, I mean, that would strike that.
Leave them on the agenda for April. Or maybe after new members were oriented so that they know the role of the board. And it's fresh and then new goals are made.
Can always do a goals workshop in, in May.
Right.
Which would be from May to May.
Right.
It's not a bad cycle either because you're still kind of that whole school year, basically.
Yeah, it seemed like we were pretty busy over the summer. Board meetings.
Now, what, is everybody's thoughts on that? I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine with that if that's what everybody wants to do. Do we want to amend some of this stuff now that?
Just cross off COVID.
I was just going to say the COVID one, yeah.
Certainly can, do your goals.
What is, what does everybody think? Because the, I mean, the, the. This one still holds true about the building.
Yeah, I think.
The board will support.
Yeah, I guess, you know, just to think about the first one, you know, I'm thinking about that survey you guys sent out, asking like, where do you want to spend this COVID money? I mean, I think we're still, right, are we still kind of dealing with ramifications and there's still money coming in? We're still looking at social emotional learning, discipline issues, I don't know, kind of continues. I think we could word it differently, but.
I don't know, what is everybody thinking? I could go either way. We could also come back to it at next meeting, think about it.
Deciding if we want to change the cycle of goals, the timing of the goals. Because if we want to change all the net, like for, keep the regular, the, what we've done up till now, then we do a workshop. If we say maybe we do May to May, then maybe they just stay till May. We didn't do it last year till December.
Right.
I think it is nice to keep it on the election schedule and be inclusive of people who are just on.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I mean, I think a lot of these still hold true, so is that okay with everybody?
May to May.
So do we need to make a motion to do that or is that just, we'll just revisit it in May? Okay, perfect. Okay, so moving on, school board treasure, we, Patricia Lovejoy is going to stay on until the election, thank you. I know, that's amazing. She's going to do that.
So please recruit someone to get their name on the ballot.
We need to have somebody on the ballot for March. So I've, I've asked a bunch of people and everybody's just busy with other commitments. So if anybody knows.
Remind us what the commitment is for the treasure?
Hey, you have to go and sign, manifest usually once every other week, you know, every two weeks, like you all, because that's when the accounts are run.
Can I put something in the newsletter?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
In the March of elections, there's going to be an open seat.
They don't come to board meetings, they don't, you know, it's just getting in, signing.
When do you have to put your name on the ballot? I forget.
Oh, I can't remember.
I think it's in January.
It's probably worth like a couple of messages when you're closer.
Yeah.
I'll do like one now saying, just think about it and then as we get closer, I'll put it in the weekly or whatever.
Yeah, okay.
Is it a three year seat that will be open?
That's a good question.
I believe it is.
Is it three year?
I think it probably is, three, three years.
Losing a one year seat, right, so.
And how long has Patty done it? Forever?
As long as I can remember.
And we need the district clerk too, right?
We will need a district clerk, yep.
Okay.
I'm going to confer with you before I put something in to make sure I have all the positions.
Sounds like clam.
Okay, well, great. I was very thankful that she wanted to, was able to help us, so that's great. I don't foresee a non-public for tonight unless anybody has anything.
I don't have anything.
Anybody have anything else? If anything comes up that you want me to put on the agenda, just let me know. We usually, when do we meet? We meet the.
We meet the Wednesday before the Wednesday.
Wednesday before the Wednesday.
Two weeks before the board meeting.
Is when we meet.
So you'd want to do it by Tuesday, two weeks before the board meeting. I'll let Kate know if you have something that you'd like on the agenda.
Okay. If that's it, this will be like a record to get out of here. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.